Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council members. It is my pleasure tonight to introduce Kristin Bits, the newest member of the Community Development Department. Kristin was hired as an Assistant Planner, and she'll be doing a little bit of everything for us. We like to refer to this position as our Swiss Army Knife position. She'll essentially be doing the primary backup for the building permit technician, probably 25 percent of her time. She'll also be doing admin assistant duties, but then also planning duties. And the planning duties will include responding to planning inquiries, reviewing building permits, and business license, and other minor planning activities. Kristin comes with a great background for the position. She actually worked for the City of Galt about 10 years ago as a permit specialist. So, a lot of what she's doing is really easy for her to kind of get back acclimated and get back into the department. She's also worked for a local developer, and most recently for a CSD fire district. Kristin is a Galt resident. She's lived here for, since 1992. She graduated Galt High School. She has two children that both attend Galt High School, or Galt Schools. When she's not busy doing family things, she's busy studying for her bachelor's degree. You know, about two weeks ago, I ran into one of Kristin's old bosses, and she told me we were getting a rock star. And she didn't mean that Kristin's musical abilities were that good. They were referring to her ability to perform and get things accomplished. So, we're real excited to have Kristin on the team, or back on the team, I should say, and we're glad to have her, and we hope you can help welcome her to the department.
(applause)
All right, moving on to public comment. Can we get that read, please?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, "Members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address City Council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council and limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the clerk."
And do we have any speaker sheets? Very good. Moving on to the consent calendar. Do we have a motion to accept?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Lamson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Huer. Off of the vote, please.
Councilmember Huer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
4-0 vote. Doesn't appear we have any scheduled matters or regular calendars, so we will move on to the City Attorney's Office.
Yes, good evening. Well, we're moving right along. So, actually, to address the 4-0 vote we just had, as you know, Mayor Powers resigned effective September 19th, so we discussed filling the process for filling that vacancy, which has to be done within 60 days, either by appointment or calling a special election. The City Council determined to proceed with the application process. The City Clerk advertised for applications to close on October 5th. We received 12 applications. So, those applicants are Robert Balleier, Jim Conick, Sherri Daly, Jean Davenport, Sean Farmer, Fred Gothel, Tom Hagland, Kelly Keegy, Tom Malsen, Craig Morris, Tim Reed, and Randy Shelton. So, there are a lot of great candidates there, and while the Government Code aligns out how to fill the vacancy, it doesn't provide any specific instructions then on how you consider appointments from that point on. So, you really have a lot of discretion in how to proceed at this point. I laid out in the staff report a few options, my suggestion for a process, given the number of applicants that you did receive. One is, obviously, to take public comment. Then, I would suggest that you hear from the candidates, since there are 12. We've included all of their applications in the packets, but to give each one three minutes to speak and address the council and the public on issues that they would like to touch upon, and why they'd like to be appointed to the City Council. The appointment would go through November of 2018, and actually until the new, the election results were called in 2018, which would be December 2018. Then, potentially narrow the field at that point. One option I have in there is to have each of the four councilmembers then list two, their top two candidates, and then the City Clerk would write those down. We would determine if anybody received at least two votes, and that that would then narrow the field. If a candidate received at least two votes, they would then proceed to the next step, and you could either call them up to ask either specific questions, or ask if they'd like to speak any further, to further issues that you'd like to hear more about from the candidates, and then suggested a motion to appoint at that point in the process, if you're so inclined. There's, we'll have to be, I think, a little flexible here. Like I said, there's no specific rules on how you want to proceed with the appointments, so the decision is yours.
Thank you. Counsel, does that sound adequate to you?
Does the, is it necessary to name two candidates, or do we want to try and just name one individually and see how that goes? Does that matter?
I think it'd be okay to name one, up to two.
You can do one up to two, and it was just trying to-
Sure.
-figure out a way to see, narrow it down. It could be that if you do one or two, that will then identify maybe only one candidate at that point.
Okay.
It's hard to say, so I would suggest you maybe potentially hear from the applicants and then determine.
Can we work? Okay.
Public comment.
With that, we'll open up to public comment. Do we have any?
Yeah. I received a couple of emails, and also the letter that was included in council packet. Mr. Hagland, Mr. Conick, and Mr. Reed are unable to make it tonight.
Okay. And we have no public comment?
No, I don't have any public comment.
Okay, with that, then we will move forward. We're going to take this in alphabetical order, so with that, we will start with Mr. Robert Balle.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council. My name is Bob Balle. I've been a resident of this city since August 1st, 2002. I retired from Pacific Bell after 25 years of employment as a human resources support manager on December 29, 2001. I'm licensed by the City of Galt to operate a paralegal-type business out of my home, and have used my skills in that area, and my many years as administrator and manager at Pacific Bell, to help the elderly people in my community with problems related to creditors, government officials, and/or private individuals for a low fee. As a U.S. Army veteran, I also help my fellow veterans in Galt and/or surrounding communities with attaining their well-earned benefits at no charge. I was born on January 30, 1946, in Banburg, Germany, and at the age of 16, my family and I immigrated to Elk Grove, California, just up the road, on December 16, 1962, AD. Upon graduating from Elk Grove High School, two years later, at age 18, I voluntarily entered the U.S. Army on July 2, 1964. I served honorably for eight years, including Vietnam '70 to '71, where I was awarded the Bronze Star Medal. Upon my return from home to Elk Grove in August of 1973, I began working for Pacific Bell. Can you hear me now? Graced my family and attended college. I attained an AA from American River College and graduated from Sac State with a BA in Government Political Science. Last November, I was appointed to the Commission on Aging by the council, and I've served in that capacity since. My service on that commission has piqued my interest in a more broader responsibility like being a member of this council, and I submitted my application for your consideration. I believe my background in administration and government service, both U.S. Army and civilian service, has given me the necessary skills to serve in the capacity of City Council member. I was also appointed to serve as a member of the local draft board by recommendation of then-Governor Arnold Schwarzenegger, and approved by then-President George W. Bush in the waning days of his administration. Thankfully, I am not busy at all in that capacity, at least for now. My aim, if approved, to fill the position of council member by you, would be to assure you of my working in concert with you, to attend to the needs of this city by listening and responding to the residents of the city, making this a more vibrant, safer, and more beautiful city to live in. Vibrant by attracting new businesses to our city through networking with businesses that may be interested in coming to the city, thereby increasing job opportunities for our residents and increasing the revenue flow for the city. Safer by supporting our fine and professional police department, providing them with the support and tools they need to do their job, and to assure them that while we hold them accountable for their actions or interactions with our residents, we will have their backs for their legitimate actions. More beautiful because I'd like to give support to our beautification committee, for example, in their efforts to bring matters requiring our action in the area of beautification.
Mr. Balleier, you'll have to wrap it up.
Okay, I am. I.e., picking up trash on the side of our highway and other areas of the city. A clean, safe, and beautiful city where people can live their lives in peace will attract new residents, businesses, and revenue. Do you have any questions?
Mr. Balleier?
Yes, sir.
If you are appointed, would you consider then running in 2018 for the same position?
At this point, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I thought I saw Sherri Daly?
Yeah, she walked out. Go to the next person.
Okay. Jean Davenport.
My name is Jean Davenport. I've been a resident of Galt for the last 15 years. I've served on the Planning Commission, and volunteered at numerous different organizations. I'm a member of the Galt Sunrise Rotary, past president. I've been maybe overly involved in city issues because of my desire to be a part of what we do here and how we see Galt grow. I might not always get along with everybody, but I'm up front, you know where I stand. When I leave, there's no animosity involved, I just move on to the next issue that I'm passionate about. If I'm appointed, the one thing that I think we need to keep in focus is what we just did for the Delta College campus. I don't think we walk away from that. I think it's imperative that we stay involved in their continuing, excuse me, their continuing effort to be at Estralita, see how that grows, because if something does happen, we need to be ready to go forward again. And I say that, you know, in the sense that our kids have always been underserved in this community. I honestly believe that, and I think Delta College would change so much, and I don't think, I don't care if it happens next year or in five years, the fact that we stay actively involved in that, I think is very, very important. Also, I'd like to see our business area be enlarged. I think we need to bring in more businesses like Calways. I'd love to see our, the guy that has the solar business, excuse me, expand, and I'd like to see that area out there grow a bit, because now that we own the land for the Walnut Street overpass, I think it's a good example for us to just get involved in enlarging that area out there. Because if we get more businesses like Calways, people can live and retire in this city. We don't have that right now. There's not too many opportunities for people to stay here to work and make livable wages. It's like when it came to the Walmart issue. I know that was contentious, and I was on the Planning Commission at the time, and I wasn't against Walmart, I was against a superstore, because it was a direct confrontation to Rayleigh's, where they have livable wages. People can retire in that industry, and I think that really helps us. And I still think we get our, you know, the tax base would not be that much different because of the grocery items that they're buying now at Walmart compared to Rayleigh's or Save Mart. So, if I were appointed, I would finish out the year and then-
Mr. Davenport, you're down to 15 seconds.
I can see that. Thank you so much. I would consider running for a second term, but only one more term. I wouldn't want to go past that. I've been retired for three years now, and I think I've mellowed quite a bit. I needed to throw that in. Thanks.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Davenport. We'll back up a bit. Sherri Daly?
Pardon my absence, it's a long commute from Sacramento, so I left for a few moments. Thank you for inviting me here tonight and considering me. As you all know, I have seven years' experience on the Planning Commission, two of which I was the chair. I pretty much know all of the projects before the city, inside and out. I would be able to hit the ground running. I was a member of the Measure R Committee. I was a member of the Parks Master Plan Committee. I'm a 29-year resident of the city. I volunteered in about just everything you can think of, including being the one that carries the box to the meetings at Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Gators, you name it. I've done my part to help the community. I have a master's degree in business and 15 years' experience in management. I have pledged, in my papers I submitted to you, that I don't think anyone should use this appointment as a way to get a leg up on the competition, or to alter the balance of, excuse me, power between the councilmembers. So, I have pledged not to run in 2018 and not to vote, to abstain from the vote on the mayor. So, I have no objective other than to do my part. So, I guess the question would be, why isn't council just appointing the person who only lost by 3%? So, I think it has a lot to do with the 2016 campaign, and that campaign was rigorous, to say the least. There are a lot of things said on both sides that were hurtful, they were mean, they were untruthful, they hurt the families involved, and I just want to say publicly that I don't blame my opponent, who ran, and I forgive the people that may have been her associates or colleagues, surrogates is what they call them. But, you know, that was 2016. I don't feel that way about anybody who was involved, and I just want to share that she and I were friends before the campaign. I know her to be a devout person, in a faith that believes in forgiveness, and I know her to be a person of integrity who walks the walk. So, if this appointment is all about being vindictive for 2016, I apologize for spending your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Daly. Sean Farmer?
First, I want to say to Mr. Balleier, thank you for your service. We appreciate that. Good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor and members of City Council. My name is Sean Farmer, and I am one of the applicants for the vacant seat on the City Council. As you all know, a dozen people have applied for the seat. Many have similar backgrounds and experience. Some have ran for City Council before, some have even served on council, and some have worked in other city governments. I can tell you that I am not one of those people. I do not have a background in politics, I've never been a Galt City employee, nor have I worked in other city governments. But what I am that is important is I am a fourth-generation Galt citizen. I have been here for over 40 years. My parents, grandparents, and great-grandparents have lived in this community. My great-grandfather worked for the City of Galt, and my grandmother Gladys Farmer served as the head manager of the Galt Market for more than 33 years. My wife of 22 years and I were both raised here and have raised our three children here. My wife and I also own businesses in Galt for almost 20 years, and my family owns many properties in the community. I'm active in the community. I currently serve on the Galt Historical Advisory Committee, and I'm a member of the Galt Historical Society and the Chamber of Commerce. One of the reasons I seek this appointment is because I feel for a long time, our City Council has lacked the presence of a member who is a multi-generational Galt citizen, someone with deep roots in the community, whose family has been a part of Galt for several generations, and has been here since it was the small town that it used to be. Galt has been, Galt is, and always will be my hometown. Because of my deep family ties here, I relate well to the lifelong citizens of Galt, but I was also born in a generation that looks towards the future. I feel I can be the bridge between the small town of the past that many knew and loved, to the city that Galt is becoming and will become under its future leadership. One of the long struggles our small town has had is growth. People in the community say what they love most about Galt is its charm, or small-town feel. This comes from both those that have lived here their whole lives, and from those that have just recently come to Galt. I know that growth is necessary for our city to prosper, but I have the passion and the ideas for smart growth to be able to keep the small-town feel of Galt while still growing it, moving our city forward while being mindful for Galt's past to preserve its history. Another reason I seek this appointment is that I feel the council needs a new member who is a Galt business owner, merchant, and property owner. These people in our community need to have elder representation in our government and have a voice. I have the experience of being a Galt business owner, property owner, and I am both financially and emotionally invested in this community.
Mr. Farmer, you have 10 seconds.
I have great respect for the current City Council members and some of my fellow applicants this evening for their service, both past and present. But, the people of Galt want a council member that is not just political, city, or has government experience. The addition of a new council member that is deeply vested-
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. Your time is up.
It's for all these reasons that I seek this appointment, and feel I'd be a valuable asset to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer.
Any questions?
Fred Gaethel?
My name's Fred Gaethel. I actually didn't prepare anything, because I was expecting Q&amp;A-type things. My background, I got a degree in environmental science with a minor in safety and industrial hygiene from a college in Connecticut. I worked for an insurance company for 40 years as a fire protection engineer. As you know, I'm on the SAC YOLO Miskito and Vector Control District Board, I'm also on the Galt Arnold Cemetery Board. You know, the question keeps up of why would you like to be on City Council? I don't know that I like to be on City Council.[1342.15][1342.15](laughter) I think it would be a lot of hard work. I think you need, to appoint someone who knows government, because they're going to walk right into a seat. It's not, there's a learning curve, and you all have been through it. There's a learning curve to the way things work. I don't intend to run in 2018. This would be strictly a 12-to-14-month thing for me. I have no interest in doing four years on council. That's about it. Any questions?
Counsel? Fred? Thank you, Ms. Gaethel. Kelly Keegy?
I submitted an application for the open seat on City Council, because I feel there's a need to be the voice of the people. There's some real issues that we've been having lately with increased crime, the homeless, our city bill's going up, there's a lot of people that are bringing that to attention. There's, so I'd like to be able to bring, you know, be the voice of the people, be out there, listen to what people have to say. I've lived in Galt for 25 years with my husband, my two children grew up here. We moved here because of the small-town feel and the family-oriented community, which it still is. My top priority for Galt would be to continue on our path of economic development, fiscal responsibility, and to continue being the voice of the community. I think that's really big. I like the surveys on Facebook where people will give their input, definitely would pick like an agenda item that's important and see what people think, because a lot of times things are voted on, and then they see the stuff like, you know, the fencing on our, by the tracks, and it's like, where was that, you know, who approved that? Well, you missed the meetings, you know, so I would like to just be able to get more input on something like that, just to, so that you're more informed when you make a decision, that, you know, people aren't surprised when they drive by and see the changes. I think we need to look at ways to save money, you know, with the increase in the city bill. You know, do we look at everything? Take a red pen and, you know, and just, you know, try and cut as much cost as we can, so that we can go to the public and say, look, your bill's going up 60 bucks in the next five years, but this is everything we did to try and save, you know, the money. I'm familiar, and then I'm on the vice chair of the Parks and Recs Committee, and I'm also vice chair on the Measure R Safety Committee. So, safety is really important. I go to all the Neighborhood Watch meetings, we have our own block parties, we're, we just started the Homeless Committee Commission, which is going to be really huge, because we had so many people that attended with different backgrounds, different ideas. We're going to invite the DHA in town, see what, you know, what outreach programs they have. I think that needs to be a big focus, too. Let's see. I work in town, I work at BMD, I've been there since the year 2000, so I think it's really important to be able to work in the community, offered, you know, where people can work in town. I go home on my lunch hour, you know, not everyone can do that. So, I think that's really important, to find, you know, employment or, you know, bring businesses in town. Familiar with the, you know, general plan update, the northeast-
Mrs. Keegy, you're down to 10 seconds.
Oh, my gosh, that was fast.[1587.01][1587.01](laughter) So, I don't know if I would run in the year 2018. I ran before, so, I mean, maybe. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Keegy. Tom Malsen?
Councilmembers, city staff, citizens of Galt. My name's Tom Malsen, in case you didn't catch it, and since this is more of a job interview rather than a campaign speech, I'll try to stay on point and make it short. The question on the floor is, why do I want to be appointed to this empty seat? And, am I qualified? Well, those are two questions, and the answers kind of go together. First, I've been on numerous county commissions, I was on the Planning Commission for 16 years, County Environmental Commission for nine years, I chaired it for a while. I was on City Council for four years, so it's not that I haven't got the qualifications and the experience. I've been there, I understand it's a job, I understand the learning curve. Second, I have no desire to run again. I've run four times, I've worn out numerous pairs of shoes, I think I've got a couple pants legs, and the dogs have them actually, chasing me around town. I've knocked on every door. I have no desire to run again, believe me. And the third thing is, by choosing someone who is not going to run again, you have leveled the playing field for next November. You have a lot of good applicants, just read their resumes. So, a citizen of Galt will have a good batch to choose from and elect next November. So, I'm just looking at, I can pretty much step in, there'll be a audio learning curve, because I've been there, I'll fill out the term and retire. Anyhow, finally, most of you have worked with me at some point in the past, you pretty much know what you got. It's not like a box of chocolates, you pretty much know what I am, what I've been doing, what, you know, where I come from. And since this is an interview, do any of the councilmembers have any questions?
Counsel?
I think you answered everything.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malsen.
Thanks, Tom.
Randy Shelton?
My family moved here in 1990. We're bifocals now, so bear with me, okay? Good evening, councilmembers, employees, and members of the public. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Citizens of Galt need to have a continued strong leadership in our community and on our council. With my knowledge of the numerous current development projects that include- With my knowledge of the numerous current development projects that include both residential and commercial projects, along with the annexation along Twin Cities, with the need of employees' retention program, that I understand is working fairly well, and the upcoming budget process, which is always long and hard for all of us, as an active member in the community and past council member, I will continue to provide leadership and a voice of those I serve. Galt needs strong leadership that makes decisions for all the people of Galt. I will help Galt to build stronger community by working with the citizens, the community leaders, along with the school and fire boards, as well as the county, city, and federal elected officials. We must do that. My interest is to fulfill this vacant position only, so I'm offering my services for the remainder of Mary Lou's position as council member. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Was there any questions?
Questions, counsel?
Okay. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton. Okay. We've heard from all of our candidates. Questions from council, or do we go ahead and do our selections?
Well, I, I think we heard a lot of good information from a variety of candidates, and I don't know where some of the other council members are coming from, but I think, you know, having some form of experience in local government, either with the city or otherwise, I think is important. This isn't something, it's a position and it's a limited term, so whoever it is needs to be able to come in and effectively approach the job and carry out the duties and functions that is their responsibility. So I, so I think that it is important that we do have somebody that has some kind of experience in the past, and I'm not going to say what that is right now, but I think some type of local government experience. So, I mean, that's kind of just my general overview. I don't know if council members want to share their opinions as well, but I think it's, I think it's important for the public to understand how we're coming to make this decision. So I think it's important for them to have some insight into what the council members think.
Absolutely. Councilmember Lamson?
Lots of, lots of good applicants out there, a lot of good experience, and I'm not necessarily along the line that they have to have been involved in government for. It might be nice to have a business member in the community or something like that also, so I don't want to count that out, but we have a lot of good options.
Okay. Councilmember here.
Okay, so, I shared my thoughts at the last time we talked about this, and it's a one-year appointment. There's a steep learning curve. We need somebody who can, my personal opinion, I agree with Kurt, that we need someone who can, who already understands issues like the Brown Act and what our parameters are and that what the council's job is and what our function is, that, you know, that the hierarchy and who works for us, city manager, no one else. And that, you know, those kind of things, that we just don't have time in a one-year appointment to have, we have a lot of issues coming up in the next year that I really believe that we need people who already have some knowledge about projects and parameters and what's going on. I think the applicants, you know, looking over the applications, I hope every single person runs in 2018. We need good applicants. We need good candidates, and the candidates are great. And so, every single one of them could serve. I have no doubt of that, but I truly believe that in this situation, that we need someone who already has some knowledge coming into it about the way that the council needs to function. Because it is, it's a, it's a year learning curve. I mean, even when I came in and the knowledge that I had and having served on the Planning Commission for all the years and having been involved in all the years, it was still a learning curve. And so, that's just kind of where I'm standing, is that I really think that we need somebody who can immediately be on board, and we just have too many projects on the, coming up.
Absolutely. Well, I just want to say that I was extremely impressed that we had 12 applicants. That says a lot for this community. It says that our people in this community want to stay involved. They want to be part of it. And this actually reminds me back of 2010's election, when we only had three spots open, and you had 10 people applying for it, and all of them equally enthusiastic about doing the job. But I do agree with Kurt, and I do agree with Lori, that whoever gets this position has to hit the streets running. The learning curve is very steep. I'm surprised it took you, it took me about a year and a half to get it under my belt.
Well, I'd served on the Planning Commission. You hadn't.
This is true. This is true.
I had done, and I'd served on the school board, so I had some knowledge.
And with that, I guess you're going to be passing these out? Okay, bear with us a moment.
One other, I'd like to make one further comment that I think, and it was brought up by at least one of the applicants, that by having someone who's fulfilling the unexpired term for Mary Lou, I think this is important as well, that there have been several commitments made where they will not run in the 2018 election. And I think that's important from the point of view, and from the point that was raised, that it creates a level playing field if that individual has made a commitment not to run. Otherwise, it is an advantage, and there is no question. And I don't think it's responsible for this council to put somebody in a position where they do have an advantage in an upcoming election. So I think, I just wanted to make that point because I did agree with what was said.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to pass these out. They have your names on them. If you'll circle the two names that you're interested in putting forward, then hand them back to me. I'll read them out loud, and the city attorney will keep the tally, okay?
Do I give it to you? Oh, back to you.
Didn't realize we had lieutenant sitting there tonight. I looked up. We have lieutenant.
They look so much alike.
Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Hewer, Sherri Daly, Thomas Molson, Councilmember Campion, sorry, Thomas Molson, Randy Shelton, Councilmember Lamson, Sean Farmer, Tom Hagland, Vice Mayor Cruz, Sean Farmer, Tom Hagland.
Okay, it looks like those that received at least two votes are Sean Farmer, Tom Hagland, and Tom Molson.
Okay, where do you want to go from here? Further discussion?
We didn't have a set of procedures passed this point?
Yeah. No.
That was very optimistic of you.
Like I said, we need to be a little flexible depending on how it all worked out. So, you can then ask those that received at least two votes to then, if you'd like to ask additional questions, or you'd like to give them some additional time to speak. I know, I believe Mr. Hagland is not here tonight, so, you know, it's up to you, and if you want to then call them forward and hear a little further or review their applications one more time. Since Mr. Hagland's not here, you may want to go over some of his, the points he raised in his application and review each of the applicants of those four. Three, sorry.
Three.
Three.
So it's Tom Molson, Tom Hagland, and Sean Farmer.
With council's approval, I'd like to call one individual up, and then the second one as well, two separate questions that I have.
Sure.
That's okay?
Yeah.
Mr. Farmer, could you step up?
No timer this time.
No timer, just a question.
Thanks.
As a city council member, should council have a constant hand in the running of city departments?
City what? Say the last part.
Should the city council member have a hand in running all of, any and all of the city departments?
I believe that you're asking me if the city council should have a hand in running all the departments?
Right. As a city council member, should you have a hand in running any and all of-
I believe you should have input. I think it's important because typically, unlike this particular situation, most of you have been selected by the voters, so each of you have been put in a position where you have been entrusted by the community to act on their behalf. They've elected a particular person because they feel that you share their views, et cetera. So, when there's input, let's say with the planning department, for example, if there's a subdivision or something going in, something big, project down in Old Town Galt or whatever, it's important that I think that there's input from the city council members because these are people that have been elected from the community to have a voice, unlike people in the planning department, where, which are just, you know, no offense to their experience, but they've just been hired. So I think, I don't think that they should be, of course, the say-all, but I think there should be input from the city council. I believe that's a big role of the council, is to give input on behalf of the community in departments.
Okay.
Thank you. One question. Sean, you know, you know that we have meetings up here, you know, every first and third Tuesday of the month, but there are a number of other meetings that councils required or should be attending. Many are in Sacramento. You know, Vice Mayor Cruz attends a number of meetings. I do as well in Sacramento. Do you have the time available to attend up to, you know, maybe three or four additional meetings a month during the day in order to meet the responsibilities of the position?
Good question. Yes, I do. I'm actually self-employed, so I've had one business for 18 years. I have another business that's about six months old. Basically, just kind of put in my help where needed. My main business is pretty much around by my employees, so I have a lot of, you know, free time to do, focus on other things. I wouldn't have applied for this position if I wasn't ready to be dedicated completely to this. I know there's a lot of hours spent outside of meeting time. I think a city council person is not just a council person when they're sitting up behind the desk or when they're showing up at a, you know, groundbreaking ceremony or a meeting somewhere in their city. I think they're a council member 24/7. They need to be, you know, talking to the community, be available if people from the community want to come in and stop and talk to them. It's a big deal, and you really have to be able to make yourself available. That's what concerns me with some of the applicants. I know they actually work out of town, so I think that those people may not be. I live in community. I'm here every single day. I'm probably in Galt, you know, 360 days of the year, so I'm always around. I'm, you know, in town, available. So, yes, I would be, make myself available, you know, 99% of the time, and I wouldn't have applied for it if I didn't think I was ready to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions?
Mr. Farmer, are you planning on running in 2018?
You know, that's a very good question. I've heard a lot of people commenting that. I can't really say at this point because it's not 2018. If I was to be appointed to this seat tonight, and I put in a year, and I felt that I made a huge change, and I had support from the community, they said that they really liked what I've done, and they liked me being there and wanted me to run, then I would consider it. If I felt like it was, you know, not what I expected, and it was very difficult, or someone else was going to run that I really believe would be an excellent candidate, and I could get behind that person, then I would not run. So I think it's difficult for maybe, other than a couple people who have served before that can say 100%, they would not, but I think it's a little premature to say if you know whether or not you would or not, just because it's, things, you know, life happens, and it's a year away, and things can be a different, people can be in different positions in their life at that point, so it's a big decision to run.
Your community involvement with the Galt Chamber of Commerce and the Galt Area Historical Society, have you had a leadership role in either one of those organizations?
Not a leadership role, but what I mean by community involvement is that I do a lot of things within the community. I talk to a lot of folks. I'm very involved with other businesses. Like I said, I've been in the community a long time. I have lots of conversations with people that have been here, you know, multiple generations. I feel like I have a good pulse on the community of what people like to see. I feel like sometimes city leadership, they're so busy, they don't always hear those things from the community. I'm involved in sports in the community. I've coached for Parks and Rec. I'm involved in that. I am currently on the advisory committee, although we don't meet very often. It's kind of a very seldom meeting, yeah. So, but again, what I feel like I'm bringing to the community is just something that I think we're lacking, is, no, you know, disrespect to anybody because you guys are all very experienced, and I appreciate you guys' service, but I just think that it's been a long time since Galt has someone who has, you know, been here a long time and knows the community like no one else. I mean, there's probably only maybe a handful of people in this room that maybe have lived here longer than I have, or their family has been here longer. So I think that's very important, especially when making decisions about a community. Some people use Galt as a stepping stone, I think, to come in and they feel a role, and then they move on to another city. That's not going to be me. I mean, I'm here, I'm invested. I'm going to be here a long time, so when I make decisions, I'm going to be thinking about not only the community and the people that I'm representing, but also the future generations, my own grandchildren and children.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for your time.
Tom Molson?
I gave you guys a chance earlier to ask me questions. What do you got? You saved them. You saved them, yeah. Thanks.
Well, I'd just like to say, Tom, that one of the reasons that I, you know, feel that you would make a good appointment, what had to do with the fact of your wealth of experience and all the different boards and commissions and all of the commitment you've made to the community, 16 years on the Planning Commission, I mean, four years on the council, it's impressive. And you've stayed involved in the community and all of these things, so I thank you for your service to the community, and if I don't have a chance again to tell you, I, you know, reading your resume was, you know, I-
I shortened it.
-had forgotten how many things that you, that you've done.
I actually shortened it some. Thank you.
Kurt?
For, just for the benefit of the audience, Tom, I'll ask the same question. You realize there are a lot of additional meetings, and you went to those meetings, I know, because I worked with you in the past, so I don't know if you want to go-
Really want to go down there? Okay. When I was on council, after I got off council, I went back to my calendar, and I did a little math and a little checking and all. Turns out, I was at meetings in the evening, 21 nights every month, just so people know. Okay? I mean, up and down the state, Sacramento, I was on the League of Cities, I was on the Resolution Board. Now, that's fun, let me tell you, because you've got the big cities trying to politic, and you're sitting on the Resolution Boards. That was fun. So, yes, it is, it is a lot of work. You're constantly busy. I looked at it as a second job. And this time around, I'm, I was going to retire, and I still may retire, and this may be the tipping point. I'm that close.
I'm going to throw you a curve.
You would?
I know. We've known each other well. In this day and age of Twitter and Facebook and every single thing you can possibly think of in social media, as a council member, what do you think you should be doing as far as engaging or not engaging in media?
From what I have seen on a national schedule, on the national front, I would be more prone to go dark. I would. Because knowing the Brown Act and everything else, I understand that, you know, all your emails are public, everything you do is public. It's just another avenue that gives you a bigger billboard to be public, you know, and I understand you have to have a thick skin because it doesn't take much for somebody to read something wrong. And talking to them one-on-one is a whole lot different than trying to say something in 140 characters.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions here, counsel? Want to take another run at it?
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Tom.
You didn't want to talk about Hagland or anything?
Did you want to?
Did you want to talk about Hagland?
Go for it. Before you start doing this.
Just mentioning Hagland, he-
Just mentioning Hagland. He has, he worked for Galt back in the 90s. He's been around, and he has been city manager, so the experience would be incredible. He would hit the ground running, so.
Okay, so we have Tom Mawson, Tom Hagland, and, sorry, Sean Farmer.
Is it vote for two or one?
Can you just vote for one?
Okay.
One? Are you ready to narrow it down to one, or did you want to do the same thing?
Well, you can keep the narrowing down process. If you'd like to do this, and see if this brings out a candidate, you could entertain a motion. It is, again, up to the council's discretion.
Who are you looking at? Here's hers. I'm still trying to decide.
Did you need another one, Kurt, or you're good?
You're good, okay.
Donna, when the positions were advertised, was it advertised that we would be making the decision tonight?
Yes, it was.
We did agendize it so that you could appoint tonight.
No, I just wanted to know when they advertised originally for the positions. Was it kind of understood that tonight would be?
Okay. Councilmember Lamson, Tom Hagland, Councilmember Campion, Thomas Mawson, Councilmember Hewer, Thomas Mawson, Vice Mayor Cruz, Sean Farmer, Thomas Mawson.
I make a motion to appoint Tom Mawson.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Hewer, and a second by Councilmember Campion. Do we have any further discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye. Cora?
And if Mr. Mawson would so desire, I make a motion that we go ahead and swear him in tonight. Can we do that?
Yes, you may.
Is it agendized to do that?
Yes.
Are you prepared for it?
Well, unless he wants to wait, and has his family here.
What did you want to do, Tom? I mean, that way you can start attending, I mean, we have a lot of stuff in the...
I didn't hear. It sounds like you're going for it.
Are you okay with swearing in tonight?
Yes, I am.
Very good.
Yeah, it'd be a while before I can collect it. It's like herding cats to get them all in one place. You have to declare a holiday.
Yes. We don't have a mic?
Will this work?
Yes, that will work.
Okay.
Okay, you ready? Raise your right. Aye, and state your name.
Aye, and, no, Tom, Thomas Mawson.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely?
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And during such time?
And during such time.
As I'm a member?
As I'm a member.
Of the Galt City Council?
Of the Galt City Council.
I will faithfully discharge the duties?
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of?
Of the position of?
Councilmember.
Councilmember.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
We said, hit the streets running. All right. Moving on to comments by staff. Emily, do you have anything?
No, no, we have another item.
Oh, wait, 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 back up. I missed one. City Clerk's report.
We don't have any communications tonight in the City Clerk's report. Cancellation of the January 2nd, 2018 city council meeting. Preparing the packet for the meeting of January 2nd. Occurs the same week as the Christmas holiday. Employees are working a three-day work week, making it difficult to complete a packet. Staff is asking council to consider canceling the meeting of January 2nd.
Counsel, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hewer. Do I have a second? Second by Councilmember Campion. If we have no discussion, call for the vote, please.
Okay. Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Mawson?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, I almost said, I'm sorry, Cruz. Powers, I was going to say.
She'd get you for that one. Aye.
Thank you.
Ananamous.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to comments by staff. Emily?
Just want to say, welcome, Councilmember Mawson.
Thank you. Chris?
Ditto, and nothing else.
Steve?
Ditto's passe. Welcome aboard. Three quick items. This Thursday at 11:30 at the Comfort Inn is a Chamber of Commerce meeting, and will be featured on the agenda to talk about commercial sewer rates. Had a lot of discussion about residential as part of the council hearings, but fairly limited information is readily available on commercial, so be reaching out to the business community, and kind of letting them know what the impacts of current rate proposals will be. Secondly, on November 7th, at 4 o'clock in the afternoon, we're inviting council and members of the public to join us at the flagpole on Fourth Street, and we're going to rededicate a plaque at the flagpole, and dedicate a new plaque. And we're going to be working with the clerk's office on getting that word out, but I was asked to announce that today. Lastly, kudos to our community. In September, the community sort of, we had slipped a little bit in August on water conservation, down to about 20%. We'd been up, hovering near 30. Jumped back up to 28.5% in September, compared to the base years of 2013 and 14 average water usage. So keep up the good work.
Cora?
Just want to say congratulations, and welcome aboard.
Oh, thank you.
And it is Cora's birthday, so wish her a happy birthday.
And you didn't bring her a cake? What's up with that?
Seriously? No cupcakes?
Armando.
I know it's been a long time since you've been up there, but you forgot the kids' table when you were happy. I know you'll get back in the groove. Welcome aboard.
I always miss somebody. I was thinking, you know, this is the only seat at one time or another that I haven't sat in. It's first time for everything, yeah.
You're definitely not Chief Sockman, so we'll go for it, Lieutenant.
As I've been telling people, I'm his younger brother. A little less hair. The police department, first of all, welcomes you. We have a long list of things for you to review.
I'm sure.
In the uptake here. One thing that council got this evening, that we sent out to the media, which was a repeat of a press release that the county OES sent out last week for Thursday's Great American Shakeout, which is October 19th. And at 10:19, in conjunction with the Great America Shakeout, or the Great California Shakeout, excuse me, they will be activating the Sacramento Alert Program through Everbridge, which we are a participant in as part of Sacramento County, and then the Yolo Placer Group together. We will be sending out a test phone call to all landline residential phones in the city, and any people who have opted into the Sacramento Alert Program. There will be information on our Facebook by tomorrow morning regarding a way you can sign up and opt into this program if you do not have a residential landline in your home, and you're like me, and simply have your cell phone. So this program will occur. It will be a test message that all residents will get, and then those people who have opted in to the program will get it in the way you've opted in for the notification. Some folks have asked for voice only, or voice, and if you don't acknowledge the voice email, then you will get a text for acknowledgement. But that is an individually-based opt-in program. So you will see that at 10:19 on Thursday, or hear that. That's all we have.
Okay. Gene?
Welcome, Councilmember Mawson. Good to see five seats filled up there. Just want to thank our staff, Police Department, Public Works Department, our CAPS, for our response on Thursday with our train derailment incident. Things went very smoothly, and our staff reacted appropriately, and kind of addressed the situation. We still do have a street that is closed. My last conversation with the railroad is projected about Friday to get those planks back in place, and get our street open. But we're working with them, and just a big thank you to the staff and the community for their patience.
Kimberly?
Welcome, Councilmember Mawson. Happy birthday, Cora. And it's been the end of the legislative session, so we've been watching all the bills going across the governor's desk. There have been a number of them. One of note is the SB 649, which was the bill that was going to limit local discretion with respect to cell sites, and the governor just vetoed that bill.
Thank you, Governor.
That was welcome news for local government. There have been some others that were approved that we were watching anxiously related to stormwater, accessory dwelling units, and a host of other things. So we'll be doing some updates soon on all of that.
Will we be getting a summary of that?
Yes, I'm working on that.
Kurt?
I don't have anything, Tony.
Edge?
Good to see you again, Tom.
Thanks, Kurt.
We had the Kiwanis 25th anniversary. We had dignitaries from all over, and the mayor made a presentation, and so did Natoli and Susan Stockton. Anyway, so that was a very lovely time, and that's...
Nick Nerny.
Nick Nerny, that's right. And welcome, Mr. Mawson.
Thank you. I'll come over to you, Tom. No, I think everybody's heard enough from me tonight. I'm good.
Laurie?
I'd just like to send our thoughts out to the horrible fires, and the victims, and their families. It's been tragic. I mean, it's the worst disaster to hit California. I just grieve for those people. It's just been really horrendous. So if we could close the meeting in memory of those victims, and hope that we get the fires under control.
Well said. Congratulations, Tom.
Oh, thank you.
Happy birthday, Cora.
I can live down a birthday, boy. Happy birthday.
In line with what Laurie just said, I just received before the meeting, an alert from the Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality District, and I just wanted to make sure that it was publicized. The PM level, PM 2.5 level for the area is moderate. What that basically means is smoke particles. So if you do have issues with breathing, or asthma, or anything like that, it's recommended you stay inside for the next couple of days. And as well as for the individuals, and families, and businesses affected by these fires, I ask all of you to pray in any way, shape, or form that you can for them. And with that, we will close this meeting.